Six spots, we'll call the meeting. The order is up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Salier?
Here.
Any trouble up here?
Thank you. Big crowd. First thing on our agenda is approval of the utility meeting minutes from July 14th. If there's no discussion on that, do I have a motion to approve the utility meeting minutes?
I will move.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second. Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, is approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 14th. If there's any discussion on that, or do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 14th?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have approval of the claims July 15th through August 11th. So everybody's reviewed, is there anything out of the ordinary?
No.
There's any discussion, or do I have a motion to approve the claims July 15th through August 11th?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Now we have our reports. Quick trigger.
I have four claims for the grant, or the loan I should say, that need to be approved. They've all been looked over by Westler and by Klein Peter. They've approved all of them. I just need Jordan. The first one, you can either do them all together, or you can do them all separately.
Okay.
You do them all together, they just have to be, each amount has to be stated, and then you can do them.
Okay. So let's read these amounts. We have an invoice from Klein Peter Consulting for $16,500 for grant administration. We have an invoice from Westler Engineering for $34,398.48 for their services. And these are from the water project contractors for work that's been done, or materials that have been acquired. So the first one is contractor's application applicant. Let's see, I'm trying to see where the contractor for this one is. Okay, this one's from Caldwell Tanks for $1,916. Then, last one is from IHC Construction for $606,932.68. Is there any discussion on any of those, or questions? All right, so with the last two, with the contractor applications, I just, I sat in the meeting with everyone not too long ago, and they went through everything and verified that these services have been completed, or the materials have been acquired and are on site. So unless anybody's got any further comments or questions on that, do I have a motion to approve the four invoices for the water project?
I will make the motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries.
The only other thing I have is tomorrow, there's a caucus here at 6:00 to hopefully replace CJ.
All right, 6 o'clock. Sorry.
Do that for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. Attorney Swerd is not here today. Park Suburban.
Two things going on in Drazer this month. We are putting a walk-in path. It's gonna go all the way around the perimeter of Drazer. Supposed to start that the 25th. And we are replacing the kitty swing by the bathrooms. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a kitty swing, but it's gonna be a new kitty swing with the new swings. Bark and the whole nine yards, so that's what's going on. Nothing else?
Awesome. All right, thank you. Please.
One of our reserves, Hank Lukoff, has resigned today. He got picked up by Jasper County Sheriff's Department. As you know, he's also our code enforcement, so he's not going to commit to do that anymore. So he resigned from the code enforcement, it should be in your file. I knew this was coming about a month ago, so I started looking around, and we'll see the new business. Get parts, application is on file, ready to go, so we'll tell you guys what we want to do with that. We put in a pretty basic, four started, two finished, we got two officers in training. It's gonna help out our department, so.
Gotcha.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Plan Commission, no report there. We do have a Plan Commission appointment, that'll be under Old Business. Building Inspector?
No report.
No report. Stormwater Management?
We're still working on Ross Avenue. Got prints back, and that will probably be bid this fall for next spring work. The two projects, we wanted to repay the roads where we worked, we wanted to wait and put that in the community crossing grant, so a little cheaper for us.
Okay. I did have somebody reach out to me about East College Street, over by the school, just about the slow drainage.
We checked into that, and it was working, it had designed two inches of rain, and now it's not designed to take that.
Yeah.
It's still working.
Yeah, when I drove over there, there's a lot of debris on the graves, and I think that was contributing a little bit.
Appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you. EDC, no report. Fire Department?
Everything's going good, we're gearing up for Pork Fest. And we're still out trapped with our new fire engine, it's in the paint booth this week. Pump is getting manufactured, and we'll be taking a trip over to Ohio mid-September for a mint inspection, and hope to do take delivery early November, perhaps mid-November.
Cool, it's exciting.
Very exciting. Long for it, how yours?
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. All right, uh, Meeting Business, so we have our code enforcement officer applicant. Her application is in here for all of us to review. Chief has talked to her, and... You interested?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, I don't think you would've applied.
I'm here.
Yeah, okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Patricia? All right, if there are none, do I have a motion to approve Patricia Getbart for the code enforcement officer position?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Sounds easy.
Yeah, no, thank you for stepping up, so.
For sure.
We'll be in touch.
All right, sounds great.
All right, thank you. All right. We have our street paving for 2026. We've got the chart there.
You want this one, that I've got marked up?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Can you explain to me what is... Maybe Harold.
Yeah, Harold. What do you need to know?
What am I looking at?
At the very top number, say under Alice, from 49 to Maple, that condition seven, that is a 1 to 10.
Okay.
That's how they're rated. I can't think of the name. LTAP puts on a school and teaches municipalities. I learned how to do this with the county highway, how to rate a road.
Okay.
Swerd knows how, this engineer that did this knows how.
Perfect.
Usually a seven and up are good for another year or two, anything below that needs immediate attention.
Gotcha.
And then the ones down below kind of explain themselves. By tune this removal, that's grinding everything down two inches and relaying. The tack, that's the gooey tar they put down first, the surface, and then binder if they need it. Binder is what goes down first, that's the big rock, and the surface is the little rock.
Yep.
It goes on top.
Cool, thank you.
I've got one here I've marked up, we don't need to do everything on his list, according to what I, he's building off the computer, what he's seen. So I drive, I take his list, I drive around and look at everything, and the ones I see, the two that Storm worked on this past year are on the list, and that'll get us on with the community crossings, and then our app will be 50/50. Storm will pay the other 50% of 50%. And then I've got Strong, or Sunset from Strong to Pleasant, Jefferson from Strong to Pleasant, Dahmer from Strong to the West End, Susan from Strong to Couch, Diana from Dahmer to Sunset, Jefferson from Strong to 49, and Wesley from Sutton to Gordon, and Kendall from State Road 8 to the end. There's three or four sevens I left on there, we'll reveal them again in a year, if they remain a seven, they can go again. If they drop, then we'll go after next year, or next time we have community crossings available. If they were all to be done, the total would be 899,000, and our match would be 224, but we're not gonna be doing them all. So I would say you could probably cut that in half.
All right.
And that won't be till next year. We could have been applied for it now through community crossings.
ED, how many do we want applied for? Just all the ones here?
Everything, everything we have marked, yeah, could use it.
Okay. All right. And then with this marker? Alice?
Yeah, that is Alice from 49 to the, to the school parking lot. And that part from Maple to the parking lot will be half under Storm. Cause that's where we did that last drainage work in January. And then this one, the same way, this will be with Storm, Mentor from Couch to Rose, because we ran Storm line down the edge of it. So Storm can pay for half of that half.
Okay. Swerd, you need us to make a, just a list of these ones, or?
Yes.
I think the match is higher though than what it should be, cause it used 25%, and it's down to 20 now. So it should be, the match would be 180,000.
If we're doing that, 899.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'd be doing about half of them or so. Okay.
Which the state has made us keep money aside for that, all these years, so we do have the funding to do it, should you choose to do it, or you don't have to.
Yeah, okay.
I just need to know how much we're gonna use, cause we have to do surveys on them.
Yeah. You guys have any questions, comments on any of those that are listed?
I trust Harold will put in on that.
Okay. Can you read them off to you, or we got?
If they're marked, I can just count.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's do those streets. We need a vote on that?
Yeah, I agree as well, just to go forward with the community crossing grant.
All right. Do I have a motion to move forward with the community crossing grant application for the streets that Harold had listed, or marked?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next, we have an EDC appointment for Kelsey Young. Is Kelsey here?
She is.
Oh, okay. All right. And she keeps good company.
All right. She what?
She keeps good company.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Now, I appreciate her being interested in the position, so that's a council filled position. So we will see. All right, do I have a motion to appoint Kelsey Young to the EDC?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we have Old Business, last time we tabled a planning commission appointment for Benjamin, I'm not gonna try to pronounce the last.
Colletz.
Colletz. Okay. All right. So I assume that's you. Okay. All right. I know Tim talked with you, so appreciate you showing an interest in coming to the meeting. You answered all the questions that he had, he shared those with me. Do I, does anyone else have any questions for Ben, Benjamin?
Yeah, we had a good conversation, and I think you'd be a great addition to the planning commission. I'll make that recommendation.
All right. Okay, yeah, that one is a president appointment, so I will go ahead and make the appointment for Benjamin Colletz. Colletz. Colletz to the, to the planning commission. Thank you. That's our Old Business. Any other matters from anybody out there?
Just a really quick Pork Fest update, all the permits and everything is all in. We have all of our staff in, all of our service suppliers and vendors, everything's been booked up, we're good to go. Quarter pies are booked, garbage removals set, ready to go. I have all the supplies that we need, and we're ready.
Did you get a good number of applications for the upgrade?
The applications tend to come in late. They usually, like, it's like 60% is the day out.
Yeah.
But we are starting to get, they're starting to roll away.
Right on.
It's not an election year, so it won't be as big as it was last time.
Right, yeah. Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you. Anything else?
I was just curious if there was any update on, for the policies for the parking lot issue that I brought up last time?
Yeah. So there's, there's been some discussion happening on it. We're still discussing and reviewing, and there is, so there are reasons for the ordinances that they're, that we're getting a better understanding of. So we just, we wanna make the right, right decision to do it the right way without rushing, you know? The emotional side of us wants to say, yes, let's change this right now, let's make it, make it, you know, better for you. But we gotta use logic also, and make a good decision, cause there are valid reasons for the ordinance and why it's there. So we're still having those discussions and taking a lot of things into consideration, but.
So am I, I know like, pretty much said about like Pork Fest date, am I still gonna have to have vendors? Cause there was no yes or no last time, I know he said that it would be under kid, but I already got insurance, like I turned everything in. So do I need to tell those vendors to not come that day, or nothing like was for sure said last time? So I'm still kind of, that's why I'm like, kinda like, I don't know what to tell them yet, but I know he said that it could, we could all just.
Fall under that umbrella?
For just that one time, I mean, I'm gonna obviously have to know for like other times after, but.
Sure.
I just wanna make sure before, cause I've been like, all my people signed up from last time, we're still on this time, I'm like, okay, well, I don't know for sure. And they're like, well, we need to know, that's like two weeks now away, like not even, I'm like, okay guys, I'm going to the meeting, like I'll tell you.
Yeah. I don't know, would it fall under?
It would, for me, it would fall under Pork Fest.
Yeah.
However, are they registered with the Pork Fest?
We have, we have, so I have her information, I don't, I don't need to provide like, as long as she doesn't have a food vendor that requires health department information, that's really the only, cause it's private property where she's putting hers.
Yeah, it's, but it's not private property. It's private property, but you can't just use your property any way you want to, I mean, you can't. You can't just put something in or put something up with, you know, depending on what zoning you're in or anything like that, so.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, she already did a due the application with the background check and the insurance, right, so.
Not for each vendor.
So do you?
That, that's, see, that's a, I mean, I could, for my insurance policy, if that's what you guys were worried about, is the insurance coverage, I just need to list all of her vendors in my list.
The Pork Fest has always been responsible for their vendors.
Right.
So I guess I would say you would be responsible for their vendors.
Yeah.
The vendors would have to be approved, vendors that the town could, would use.
I don't know what you mean by that.
The last one she had, she had a tattoo parlor. Tattoo parlors aren't allowed in our ordinance. We weren't informed of that, and that's what brought this to our attention.
Right.
So you, she would have to register her vendors with you to make sure that they were approved vendors.
So does that mean that the, any vendor, if I were to bring a tattoo vendor, would that be part of the Pork Fest and not under the town's?
No, because that's not part of the town ordinances.
I got you.
It's, it's not in the allowed ordinances. All of its downtown is a C3 district, so whatever's allowed in that district could be there.
Yeah.
But tattoo parlors are not, you have to go through a process to get that done.
Okay, so there hasn't been any conversation about what vendors that Pork Fest can or cannot have? So I don't know what could or couldn't be available.
Whatever's not, if it's not allowed by the town, you couldn't do that.
Gotcha.
Is there a list somewhere that's not allowed?
Yeah, yeah, in the ordinance book, there's a list of, actually C3 is the highest, but I guess an example would be if you built a house in a residential district, and it was a residential two, and you said you wanted to build something different, you couldn't. So residential one is single-family homes, and that's it. You can't build an apartment building on that. So in the ordinances lists every kind of business you can have, the tattoo parlor's just not in there. So you have to apply for a variance, and that variance only applies, we have a tattoo parlor, she went through the whole process, costs quite a bit of money to do it, and she did it, and she got approved, there's certain stipulations she has to follow, but only she can do it. If she moves out of there, no one can move in and have a tattoo parlor. They would have to go through the process again.
So I guess we just need to see the list and make sure we don't include.
For that day, as long as she's with you, it's, you know, I think they've always had people in that parking lot for the Pork Fest.
No.
Yeah.
I think they just park.
Just hold on to the front.
We typically, we ended at the park bench at the. Yeah.
But for.
Yeah, so if they register with, with you, under Pork Fest, and they are within the guidelines of what's allowed in the ordinance, they're, they're good for Pork Fest. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, there's just crafters, and then a home-based cookie person that came out the first time, in which I did submit that over to Porter County Health Department, because even though they're technically underneath some weird home baking law, I still wanted them to know that, hey, this person's getting out on premises, you guys, you can come look, stuff like that. I'm not gonna have any like food trucks, stuff like that out there, because I really would like them to go to and support the fire department, and that's what I told everyone, everyone was like, can I sign up for this? We had like a grill one last time, I'm like, nope, sorry, like we're not grilling out, we're not doing this, no, only crafters, the vendors, stuff like that can come out this time.
Yeah, okay.
So you don't, you don't have a tattoo artist there now?
No.
Okay, so.
Okay. Yeah, so, Chris, have your people register with him? Could you get you? Could go.
Is there a list that we could have a copy of that shows like what's, like what the vendors can basically sell or make, you know, and?
I mean, there would be what's listed in the ordinance, so we can probably get you.
Could we get a copy, please?
Probably make that.
It's all online, there's no list of what vendors can sell exactly per se.
And we do have.
Just like types of businesses.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
We do have a list of, of certain items that, you know, we would just not approve as a.
Yeah, obviously.
Any kind of.
And we talked about that, that's not allowed, and that's why I circle and circle and circle around, cause you know there's gonna be that one bad apple that's gonna try to do something that they're not.
And obviously, if we don't sign them up, we're not gonna give them a spot to display.
Right.
So. Yeah, if you go on the town's website, all, all our ordinances are, are there, and they're, they're pretty easy to navigate through. So you should be able to find what's, what's there, what's an approved business, and then if you can't, just reach out to us, and we'll try to get you in the right direction. Good.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
No, so I guess you just send my list to him of names, and I have it all on an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, however, whatever your registration process is, have, have them complete that.
Yep.
You good to go?
Other than that, yeah, we'd still, yeah, would like to move forward to try to see if, you know, obviously this could be something up next year, whether we can make a list of certain vendors, certain people, you know, just for anyone's sake, I mean, you never know, I mean, that pizza place opening, they have a parking lot, they might try to do something in there, I mean, for, you know, future businesses, and to see if I'm actually just gonna stay in the town. I mean, I know people love it, but, you know, like I said, I haven't even made money off any of those events.
Yeah. So yeah, and then just sort of like some context, we had, I've gotta ask our attorney, like, so say I wanted to reduce the fees for, for certain types of activities, but I didn't wanna reduce them for like the guys that are going door-to-door trying to sell you pest control. I gotta, there's, you know, how do we navigate that without them saying, well, that's discrimination? So.
Well, I mean, just like me, I'm saying it's discrimination, cause Pork Fest can go ahead and do this, but then here I am, I'm in this here 365 days a year, and I, they're not following underneath what I have to follow. So I understand where, you know, if door-to-door people are gonna kinda say that, but again, they're not here 365 days either, I pay rent there, I.
Sure.
You know, I mean, obviously, he's putting in a new parking lot somehow, like.
Sure.
Something, something going on across the stand, they're moving it all around.
Yeah, it's on our radar, and it's, it's something we're, we're discussing and trying to figure out how to navigate, okay?
Okay. I'll be in the next board meeting.
Yeah, sometimes doing things the right way just takes a while, so. All right? Anything else?
So it is good for Pork Fest, though, as long as I just hand over, just wanna be clear, okay? I just needed to tell them something, cause it's like a week and a half away, and everyone's like, what am I doing with my stuff?
Yeah, I agree.
Actually, one lady left mine, and then she got a booth with him, because she could put something in the ground. Becky? She does like spinners and displays?
No. No, I talked with her, she has to bring in bales of straw. Yeah. Because the area that we're renting her is the, is the sidewalk, even though a portion of her tent may go into the grass behind it, cause she asked me that.
Yeah.
And I said, you can't really stick anything in the ground. I said, you're, the part that we're, that I control is the sidewalk.
Right.
A 12 by 12 area on that sidewalk.
I mean, when you go to buy something, you don't want it dirty already anyways, like bringing it home in your car.
She said that she was gonna bring str, uh.
That's what she brought out mine last time. She brought out mine last time, and she was out at mine, and then she canceled mine, she said she signed up for Pork Fest, so. I don't care.
All right, is there anything else from anyone else out there? All right, if there's, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn, so moved, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.